Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for January 5th. This is our reorganization meeting, and then we have a little bit of business after the reorganization. It's not on the agenda, but I will invite public comment for anybody who would like to say a few words before we begin.
Good evening. My name is Christina Peroni, and I live in the first ward. I would request, given what has been happening lately with the Board of Commissioners, to anybody who is considering running for president or vice president, and I'm sure you all know who that is, to speak to the issue of public comment. We have been getting more and more restrictive on public comment. The charter calls for discussion, and we have been limited in time. We've had outbursts from Commissioners to the public. We have had our solicitor try and narrow it. So it would be really helpful if anybody could be brave enough to speak to this issue of public comment and what sort of board you plan to run. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Dan Sherry, Wayne. Commissioner Schaefer noted in her remarks that actually on the agenda tonight is no section for public comment. Why was that? Why was public comment not listed on the agenda so that people considering coming to the meeting tonight would believe that if they showed up, they wouldn't be given the opportunity to talk?
It was an oversight. We will have plenty of public comment.
Was an oversight. Okay. Well, that oversight wasn't addressed when this agenda came out. When? Not on Friday? Not on Saturday? Not on Sunday? Not until the start of this meeting? That's curious. Anyhow, on the topic of reorganization, it's important to note that in selecting a president and a vice president, this board is selecting a person, particularly in the form of the president, who will, absent a conflict or absence, will be charged with maintaining decorum over public meetings. That's the role of the president. The president is the parliamentarian of the meeting, responsible not only for controlling comments from members of the public, but also the conduct of Commissioners who sit up there with him or her on the dais. I remind you of this because during the past year, when Elaine Paul Schaefer has been president of the Board of Commissioners, there has been some fairly outrageous conduct committed from the dais. The punch 'em out comment attributed to Bill Spingler, the shut up comment attributed to John Nagel, the punch 'em out comment associated with John Nagel, the somebody shoot you comment associated with John Nagel. None of those comments were addressed by the chair. Obviously, when that type of behavior occurs, there is an impact on the public. There is an impact in terms of whether the public feels comfortable to come in here and address this board. Not only that the Commissioners cannot control themselves, but that nobody in a leadership position will step in and immediately curtail that behavior. So when you are making your decision tonight to select who will be representing you, who will be charged with decorum, who will be ultimately deciding when to allow public comment to continue or when to cut it off, you should keep that in mind because that will reflect upon you. And I think we all know the history of certain people who may be angling for a presidency or a vice presidency. And when you vote or nominate, you should, perhaps as Ms. Peroni suggests, ask yourself, is that a decision that I am comfortable with? Is that a decision that my constituents are going to be comfortable with? And I'm not going to be ever called on the carpet to defend that particular vote, given the documented, oftentimes televised, history of certain people on this board. Before I leave, I would just say, even though Ms. Schaefer didn't specifically state it, John Rice submitted a legal memorandum regarding executive or closed sessions. I don't know if this board went into executive session prior to this meeting, but I would, again, remark that it is important to note, when one comes out of executive session, the basis for being in that executive session. I will have much more to say when John Rice's legal memorandum, which is beneath farcical, is discussed later tonight. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move along to the business. First, we have the election of president. May I have nominations?
I would like to nominate William Spingler for president of the Board of Commissioners.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other nominations? Is there any discussion among our board? Is there any discussion among our staff or the public?
I would just like to note that Mr. Spingler, as was noted in the paper, is under investigation, and I would think that that should be an issue that you should keep in mind when making that vote. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I do want to just say, I'm going to vote against it for reasons similar to last year, that this is something that we do on a partisan basis. And if I vote for it, part of what would happen is I would imply that there is a nonpartisan nature to it. And I believe that that's the case.
Okay. Any other comments?
Also, I would, I plan on voting against this. I think that this authorization will really represent a top-down tyrannical local government by a person who doesn't live in the township. And it represents a decision to have as a president, a person and a board whose intention is to continue to completely ignore the views of the constituents. Bill's three main goals, as the reason he remained on this board stated, one was Ardrossen, two was to provide for Villanova to get their conditional use through, and the third was to approve the biomed special zoning. So the Ardrossen decision, probably the worst deal that the township has ever made, basically subsidizing a multimillionaire, Villanova, which was approved despite the recommendations of staff, despite the thoughtful and documented and engineered recommendations by various community groups, were all ignored. If we vote, as is planned this evening, we can expect, and we should lament, that we will have more of the same.
Any other comments?
Just a quick one. I don't know if I agree with Commissioner Curly that this is a partisan vote. In past years, and many times every board member would vote for the president-elect. I won't be supporting Bill tonight for two reasons. During the Villanova process, Commissioner Spingler never once spoke to me or accepted my comments concerning Villanova. And during the process of jockeying for the president of the board, Bill never reached out to me. And Bill always states that you need, you only need four votes. And I'm not going to support anyone on this board that only thinks you only need four votes to do something right. And this is part of the problem of this board. If you think that four, any four of you, or any four of us, are smarter than the rest of the members on the board, think again. Because I can assure you that if we do another year where we only need four votes, it's going to be a terrible year for the public.
Are there any other comments or discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the nominations say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes by a vote of four to three. Next, we have the election of vice president. May I have nominations?
I nominate Jim Higgins as vice president of the board.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any other nomination?
I nominate, how about I nominate John Fisher?
Is there a second?
Get a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, is there any discussion or comment from the board? On either motion?
Well, I think that John Fisher made a cogent and reasonable commentary in his last, in the last comments he made there. Also, what I would point out is there's bipartisan agreement on the direction of the board, but there's solely along partisan lines, the majority vote. So I think that, if nothing else, the consideration of a bipartisan candidate for vice president should be at least considered.
Is there any other comment from the board members? Any staff or public comment on either motion? Nomination, excuse me.
Wayne. Speaking as to the Jim Higgins nomination, you do realize that you will, should this vote pass, along the same block. I imagine having the press that Radnor's Board of Commissioners has now put into the presidency with Bill Spingler, someone who is currently being investigated at the Commonwealth level for ethics, and a vice presidency of someone who is currently being looked at at the county level for ethics. Now, I understand that you also have John Nagel, who's currently being looked at at township level for ethics. I know that because I filed that particular ethical complaint following the somebody shoot you comment. But really, is this really the direction the board wants to go with the presidency and the vice presidency? You have other people on this board. It doesn't have to be Bill Spingler and Jim Higgins. My goodness. Thank you.
Any other comment? All right, we will, I'll call the vote first on the nomination of John Fisher as vice president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And it fails by a vote of two to five. Now I will call the vote on the election of, on the nomination of Jim Higgins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And that passes by a vote of four to three. Next, we will move to the oath of office of both the president and the vice president, which I see we have the Honorable Judge Osborne here. Thank you for coming.
And once again, it's my honor to administer oaths of office to these gentlemen this evening. And shall we begin with the president?
Thank you.
Please repeat after me. I, William Spingler.
I, William Spingler.
Of Radnor Township, Pennsylvania.
Of Radnor Township, Pennsylvania.
Being duly elected.
Being duly elected.
As president of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township.
As president of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of Radnor Township.
And the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of Radnor Township.
I will, during my term of office.
I will, during my term of office.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'll need you to sign this. Thank you. We'll leave the Bible.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James Higgins.
I, James Higgins.
Of Radnor Township, Pennsylvania.
Of Radnor Township, Pennsylvania.
Being duly, being duly elected.
Being duly elected.
The vice president of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township.
The vice president of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of Radnor Township.
And the Home Rule Charter and ordinances of Radnor Township.
I will.
I will.
During my term of office.
During my term of office.
Perform the duties of my office with fidelity.
Perform the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'll fill that.
what was hard work as, as chair of the.
Oh, it was a pleasure.
Well, I would just like to say that this is my 26 years as a Radnor Township commissioner, and I had eight years as a county commissioner, and that speaks for itself. And now I would like to move on to reappointments, advisory boards, and commissions. John, you want to do that under personnel?
We'll reappoint Andrew Foreman to the Board of Health, Kathy Begosian, should I do them all as a group, or?
Sure.
Is that fine?
One motion's fine.
Okay. Kathy Begosian and Elizabeth Springer to the Planning Commission, Joseph Vogel to the Rental Housing Appeals Board, Joseph Shane to the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and also my, Van Rossum, to the Stormwater.
What's that?
Oh, was that changed?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Paul Bergmeyer.
Yeah, Paul.
No, no, it is Shane. That was a change. I said that for the.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
Yeah, no, I was going to say that was.
There was an error on the original.
The original agenda, yeah.
Paul Bergmeyer's name. It should have been Joe Shane's.
Okay. That's it.
Can you make that motion?
Yeah, I move to reappoint those members to their respective boards.
Have a second?
Second.
Second? He made, he made the motion. Oh, John made it. I'm sorry, Mr. John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero. John, you want to announce the vacancies?
We have one vacancy for the alternate position on the Civil Service Commission, one vacancy on the Parks and Rec Board, two vacancies on Carfac, one vacancy on the Planning Commission, one vacancy on the Rental Housing Appeals Board. Alternate position.
And we hope that people will apply for those positions so that we can get those filled as soon as possible. And now we'll move into the regular meeting, and the standing committees are going to stay the same, except for Elaine Schaefer will now be chair of the Public Safety Committee instead of myself, and she'll be on the Public Works Committee and Sewers instead of myself, and the rest will all be the same. And Elaine, why don't you move for the adoption of the ordinance that we already introduced under Public Safety Number Eight on the agenda?
I move the adoption of ordinance 2014-16, amending Article Eight Personnel Policies of the Civil Service provisions.
Second.
Any comment for the Board of Commissioners? Any comment for the staff?
Mr. President, just want to thank the members of Civil Service Commission for their input on this.
Any public comment?
I had one item. I noticed, Chief, Mr. Superintendent, that the ordinance talks about ranks of captain and deputy superintendent. We don't have those ranks in the township at this point.
That is correct. It is in the Civil Service ordinances, as you see, Commissioner, but right now, we do not have those ranks filled. That is not in our organizational structure.
So we're planning, well, it's a potential change that we could have down the road.
There's always a potential based on the township managers and, of course, the board's desire, but right now, our organizational structure does not allow for that.
Okay. And I have one correction in Section One, Section 3.6, under that, A2, and this is not insignificant. It's, "An applicant for the position of sergeant shall have at least four years of experience as a patrol officer or higher rank in the Police Department of the Township of Radnor."
Well, that is correct, sir, because we do have corporals. We have two corporals that are still on the books.
Rather than of higher rank. So.
I got you.
It's a substantive. So.
That's just a typo, right? That doesn't need to be vote, does that need to be voted on separately?
No.
It's a typographical error.
Yeah, I think, John, it's, it's something you can cure with the retype rather than a formal motion.
Correcting that.
All right. Okay. Well, then I'll.
Well, the, for this particular, we did vote on the introduction. This is the adoption for this. And I didn't support the original introduction. I think this limits our flexibility on who we hire, and I think that was the complaint, and I still have that concern with this, so I'm not in favor of this.
All right. I would like to move the final passage of this ordinance with the change that I noted.
I'll second that.
Public comment?
Good evening. Dan Sherry, Wayne. You're now taking official board action. As I pointed out in my, well, two public comments ago, does this board go into executive session before the meeting?
I know, I have it. I missed it, Mr. Sherry. I meant to.
Yeah, you did. You did miss it.
I meant to say it, and it'll be the next item I bring up, that we had an executive session, and land matters were discussed. That'll be the next item, and all commissioners were present. It'll be the next item I bring up. We're getting off to a rocky start, but we're going to have a good year. Thank you.
Yeah. So we're getting off to a rocky start. The first thing we don't have, which was an oversight in this evening's agenda, is advising the public that they'll have the right to comment tonight. That's a bit of a goof. And now, it's brought up at the beginning of the meeting, did you have executive session? You're supposed to announce that you're in executive session. You're having a topic discussed with the solicitor tonight, who wrote a brief on it regarding executive session, and you still haven't figured out yet your obligations regarding executive session in terms of what you have to announce? I mean, this isn't a rocky start. I would say this is more of a continuation, except now with the new president and vice president. Look forward to hearing what that executive session is, and what it constituted, and what it involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to one. I want to note that we did have an executive session before this meeting, and land matters were discussed. All commissioners were present. Next, we have a discussion of the capital.
Wait, Bill. Bill, that was the vote on the amendment. No?
I moved to reintroduce it with the change.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll have a discussion of capital, capital fund planning, plan, capital funding plan.
Yes. What we wanted to begin the conversation with the board this year is, after coming off the approval of the budget with the capital plan, is the discussion regarding how we're going to fund this and future plans, as we present to the board the five-year plan, and also, and you've charged other boards and commissions, when we've looked at planning five years out, how we're going to plan this, how we're going to fund this, of making the board aware of this, and then also how we're going to fund these. Over the last several years, we've talked about putting money aside, how we're going to put money towards these long-term investments. The board has done a nice job of putting money towards the short-term investments that we paid cash for these, or we've leased some of these pieces of equipment, but how we're going to fund these long-term, some of the bigger items. And we know we've kind of pushed some of these down the road, kicking the can, or that we can't do that anymore. So we wanted to be able to begin the year off with starting that conversation with the board, so that we become familiar with this, and then as we work our way through this year, of how we're going to fund some of these major expenses that we're going to be looking at years in advance here. So I'll let Bill kind of pick it up from there. Bill?
Sure. Thank you. And Jim, if you could put this up on the screens if they're, if they're turned on, I'd appreciate it. Just as a way of overview, because we really don't spend that much time on this during the budget process, real quickly, I'm in the budget document here. The five-year capital plan is incorporated into the overall comprehensive budget, and throughout the plan, it drills down into different levels of detail. So for each of the years, and obviously, I'm not expecting anyone to read these numbers, this is more of just the navigation, but for each of the years, there's a sources and uses for the capital plan, so you can see where the current source of funds would come from to fund the program, and then how those funds are being utilized, both in terms of the different funds of the township, to include the general capital activity, as well as stormwater, sanitary sewer, liquid fuels, and so on. And it has one of these tables for each of the years in the capital plan, which go out to 2020 currently. And then those are summarized with a couple graphs, just to show quickly all of the years and what those totals look like. So you can see across the years what the total capital funding looks like, and then how that is broken up amongst the different township funds and, amongst the township funds. Then finally, the capital plan for each of the years goes into line item detail that actually shows, in this case, all of the fleet vehicles in the police department, and the plan goes on to show all of the different departments and areas of capital that are included, both in terms of fleet and in terms of other moving equipment, such as snowplows, lawn mowers, some of the non-vehicle-related equipment for each of the departments. Then the plan goes, goes further into stormwater, and as of now, since the Stormwater Advisory Committee is working through the various projects, that a lot of that's to be determined, but we would expect that information to be, to come as a recommendation from that group. We also have sanitary. We have our road and bridge. We have township facilities, including parking lots, township buildings, which include not only this building, the Public Works Garage, the library, the senior center, and other areas that we own. And then it also goes into all of the different parks that the township owns, and has a line item for each of the different amenities at the park that would someday need either improvement or replacing. And then finally, we go through all of the different traffic signals and signs throughout the township, and forecast out when those would be replaced. So the capital plan is, it's been a work in progress over the last few years, but it gets better every year, or more comprehensive every year. So at this point, I think, as the manager alluded to, is having, starting the discussions on funding. The chart we're looking at now shows the gap, or not the gap, but the two different primary funding sources. So the line across the top represents the total spending forecasted in each of the years, and the blue bars represent how much is coming from the general fund. And how that's important is, the amounts coming from the general fund are typically tied to how much tax revenue may be needed, or amounts that would otherwise come from taxes or a reduction of other expenditures to fund it. And quickly looking at these, you could see a couple things. First of all, some large variations, and second of all, that the amounts aren't insignificant, averaging somewhere in the $2 million ballpark after 2015. So that's part of the reason why it's on tonight's agenda, is to begin the conversation on developing a funding plan. At the same time, at the December Carfac meeting, as Carfac was discussing some of the items, in addition to things that the commissioners have requested that they look at for 2015, Carfac also noted that this is an area that they too would like to weigh in on if the board were to assign that to them. So that would be one thing we'd look for tonight, is some sort of, if the board wishes, an assignment to Carfac to take a look at this at a global level and provide feedback on funding.
Yeah, and I think from my perspective, and I think this is something, I know that Commissioner Booker, Schaefer, and Nagel have been, was, I'm going to use the example of the Parks and Rec Board, is we had a meeting, I believe it was November, I think we had several of them in November, in that where we had the conversations in regards to, Parks Board looked at a lot of the facilities, and they had worked very hard over this, over the year to come up with their plan, but then when it come. several of them in November, in that where we had the conversations in regards to, Parks Board looked at a lot of the facilities, and they had worked very hard over the year to come up with their plan. But then when it comes to budget time, I've got Parks and Rec, you know, from the departments looking at, here's what their requirements are. Got Parks Board looking at what their requests are. I've got the Board of Commissioners, you know, trying to stay within this certain number. So it becomes difficult of trying to juggle the requirements of staff, Parks Board, where do we try to end up at, what do we prepare to the board? So trying to juggle all of those. So I think we came to a consensus with the Parks Board, is how do we try to address this? How do we try to come up with a consensus between the Parks Board and staff, and then trying to meet the requirements of what the board is looking for, to try to come up with, how are we going to do this? Because the numbers get bigger and bigger as the years go along. How are we going to address that? So if that's a situation where the board is going to say, it is X amount of dollars that we are going to allot for this, how do we try to marry those two together, to come up with, this is how we're going to move forward? Because you've got a lot of parks that are going to need some significant dollars. Are we going to address it by being creative with public-private partnerships? Is that, does the board want us to work in that type of direction? What parameters do we work in and around? How are we going to fund these? Is it a matter of staying within a certain parameter of the budget to say, look, we are not going to increase any type of other revenue sources, like increasing taxes or fees or something? So we have to live within here and then cut within there to make additional funding? Or are we going to borrow money, and then look at repaying that back, under, again, reduction of some line items to be able to pay that back? So it's kind of a broad area that we need to try to narrow in on, and have that discussion. But as Bill spoke about, is this an item that now we navigate to Carfac, to have them work along with staff to come up with a plan, but also, at the same time, the commissioners are becoming familiar with what the requirements are within this plan, which is pretty heavy as it's moving forward in the years, to actually, now we are starting to recognize that we have to start addressing some of these bigger numbers as we move forward. And I think the last Parks Board meeting was interesting, and I think they had made those suggestions, that they've, some of these folks have been on the board for five or 10 years, and they've seen that, you know, they've put these plans together, and then they're not being addressed. So now, they've got to start seeing where some of these dollars start to be hit at, because I believe there's probably about, what, $750,000 or half a million dollars in restrooms, that I think they've recommended, that they want to see that's not in the budget, that they would, that their recommendation, they'd like to see these get done this year, is how do we fund those? Where do we come up with those dollars? So I think that's kind of that charge of, how do we start to address a lot of these situations, keep that momentum? Because they spent a tremendous amount of time, and I give the Parks Board a lot of credit, they spent a lot of time going out and walking these parks and putting a lot of time into it. So I'm not sure if Steve or Tammy, if you want to add anything to what I gave, you know, so far on this item.
Definitely following what the manager said. We spent a lot of time on these five-year capital plans, and there's a lot that wasn't done over the years, for whatever reasons. And we do have quite a bit to do, especially in our parks, with a lot of the aged equipment. And then you go to the parking lots, and then the parking lots in our, you know, in-town, the paid-for parking lots. So there is quite a bit to do, and there's considerable funds that would have to be expended to really start to catch up on a lot of this.
Yeah. Just also to echo a lot of the manager and Steve's points, of course. Having spent a lot of time in the last three, four months with the Parks and Recreation Board, I don't know if you're all aware, but they did take on a stewardship program of the parks this year. They started that, actually, I think it was in June or July, where they divided up parks amongst their members. And they spent a lot of time over the summer going into the parks and exploring a lot of the facilities, to note some of the items that were in repair, items that, you know, obviously, there's things they'd like to see, like restrooms that don't exist in some parks, like Emlyn Townell. There's Brook Parking Lot, Brookside Parking Lot, that's right off of the Radnor Trail, which is another viable place for a restroom facility. The Willows, Anki Park. So, you know, we know that there's a lot of opportunities for potential partnerships, to where we could achieve some of these things. There may be, you know, alternative funding in other directions. But I know that the Parks Board has really put a lot of effort and energy in, especially in the last half of this year. And having worked with them closely in the last few months on this, I know that they're enthusiastic about some of the projects that we can, that we can put on this list and try to accomplish. And also, just cautious too, because I know that they've seen over the years where they put a lot of time and energy in making some suggestions, but it's been frustrating for them as well, not to have clear funding mechanisms. So we want to make sure that their time is spent wisely, because I think they've done a really good, good job on this.
And then your Stormwater Advisory Committee, you've got a lot of talented folks there that, over this year, they'll be working on projects and starting to put things in place there. So I think in that area, they'll be working in a lot of those areas, too, to kind of present back to the board here, kind of starting to put those things in place. And that'll be coming forward, too. So.
Sure. Yeah, I think the two takeaways that we're requesting tonight is, first of all, if the board wishes an assignment of taking, for Carfac to take a look at the overall capital plan, and start coming, working with the administration on developing some recommendations on funding. And then the second is just to make sure that everyone's familiar with the capital plan itself, what's in it. And I'm, I'm sure I speak for all the department heads when I say that we're all available to answer any questions, if there, if an opportunity to sit down and step through it in more detail, not necessarily in a meeting like this, to make sure that everyone's up to date, or up to speed on it, I would be more than willing to do, to do that. So please just reach out.
Well, I just want to say thank you for bringing this up at this point, starting off the year, talking about this, because I've seen what, in my time on the board, what tends to happen is that when we get to budget time, all of our attention is to the operational budget. And we get very detail-oriented and talk a lot about that, and we sort of push off the discussion about capital needs. And yet, they build and they build. We've been lucky, we've had three years of no tax increase, because we've paid for a lot of our capital needs from sort of, you know, bonus business privilege taxes. And we've been able to not raise taxes and still pay for what we had to pay for, capital needs-wise. That's not a good long-term plan. We all recognize that. We need to come up with a more dependable and predictable way to fund these capital needs. And I very much welcome the idea, and I'm happy to make a motion to that effect, to ask Carfac to analyze the situation and give us some different options of how, different funding streams, or a combination of different funding streams that we could put together, and start a plan from now, so that we build a constant stream to fund those capital needs, without having to wait and see if we get a, have a great year business tax-wise. But having said all that, there is absolutely no doubt that we have needs that we haven't fulfilled, especially in the Parks and Rec, or Parks Department. We have definitely put off a lot of those expenditures for many years now, and we put them off again this year. And that, I think we're at the point now where we can't do that anymore. So this is a very well-timed and welcome discussion. I'm very happy to be a part of it. I'm very happy to make the motion, and I will right now, that we request Carfac to do an analysis of the different options we have to come up with a funding plan for our capital needs. I'm not sure that we would include stormwater in that, in that we have a separate funding stream for that. But, which we have, I've always talked about, you know, kind of living, that's our spending for that. That fee is to pay for our stormwater program. But for all of our other capital needs, moving forward.
So point of order, can we hold off on the motion until we hear from everyone?
Sure.
That would be my point.
Other commissioner comment?
Sure. I'll start us off. So first, I think the biggest, you know, arguably among the biggest, is the things that we have to do is control spending. I mean, part of why some of us were opposed to the purchase of our Drossin was that that is money that could be spent on capital, and there's a well-documented demand for capital. So that's one thing. One, I get the feeling that one thing that, the way we have done it, at least in my five years, is we say, here are the problems, now let's go out and raise the money for these problems. But I think the answer is somewhere in between that, and here's how much we have, what are the high priorities for that? So the way I would like to see it is, is that slide that Bill showed, which is the amount of money available per year. And then the staff comes to us and says, okay, here's a list of 100 projects, we have enough money to do six, you know, and these are the six highest priorities. And then we move that needle up and down, based upon whether we're satisfied with six projects or not. But I think what, I mean, part of what I think we're doing, and there's nothing nefarious about this, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, but I feel like sometimes we're chasing these capital demands. There won't ever be enough money to satisfy all our capital demands. So I think sometimes when it's presented as, wow, look, there's $5 billion worth of capital, it's a problem that we can never solve. So I think we've got to set a cap, prioritize, and then apply at that. I also think that sometimes we get a little bogged down in the mid-year capital project, and that's a little bit problematic, because we don't see the, we don't see that project in the context of other projects. So I'd like to see us gravitate away from that. An example would be that, the North Wayne Field, which, as I recall, was not part of a, it was sort of an aside, it was, so that would be one of my other recommendations. See if I, oh, and then last, I, well, two other items. One, is Carfac the right board? We're not looking to send it to Carfac to tell us that we need a potty at Emlyn Townell, correct? Like, this isn't, we're not, we got to, we want to make sure that we don't solicit political input from, small P, political, from Carfac. If there's, you know, how to generate the money, that would be one thing. But Carfac isn't the body to be telling us that spending on a park is more important than spending on a basin, or something like that. And then last, I'm not sure that the funding is really that complex, is it? It's just whether we want to have a dedicated millage to capital, and then have that funding go up or down, based upon how much we put into it. So I'm not sure what Carfac would do. Like, I didn't, from, I guess I'd want to hear that elaboration, as to what staff wants them to do. But to me, them setting an amount is not very complex.
Well, I think with, for Carfac, and I agree with the well-stated points of Commissioner Curly there, I agree with that. Carfac, though, will have some input in analyzing whether we issue additional indebtedness to fund these. And as I recall, Bill, I think at this point, the 10-year Treasury today was just closed just over 2%. I would bet we're going to be in the money on that refunding, as far as our target savings. So we could have another, we could have additional savings from refunding or refinancing existing indebtedness, based on lower interest rates in this first part of the year. So that's one way to look at this. So there is some money that could be, that's $0, as far as, will have no increase in debt service, but could produce some cash for these. We could structure it that way. Could you put the, back on, could we go through the list, at least for the 2016 projects, which I think was the highest bump on your, on your chart, just to refamiliarize? I do know, I am familiar with the Parks requests for this year. Your list of projects there?
Well, we can drill into the list of projects if you'd like. Just real quickly, though, and I know these are still kind of small. But if, the park improvements out of a total of 3.2 million in general capital fund spending, the park improvements is a million of that. So just for point of reference to the total impact, between, so the big jumps from 15 to 16 include park improvements and traffic control systems. Those are the two, the two that jump up the most. So we can take a look at that if you'd like.
Well, that's really, I wanted to take a look at just the big, the big contributors to that.
Okay.
Well, actually, I thought you had it covered, but that's all right.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. That's all right. Keep going. Let's take a look, let's take a look at them.
It's your call.
A million. I thought, I thought we showed there a million. Does, that excludes funding from third parties? Didn't, because you showed offsets in this spreadsheet.
Yeah. If there was funding, if there was funding that is confirmed, and I guess in an accounting sense, realize, funding that we are going to realize.
Funding that you would book under the GASB standards, I guess.
As a receivable, it was included in here. If it was, say, a grant application that we put our name in, and we hope to get it, we did not show offsets for those. But I think, and the big contributor for the park system in 2016 is, well, you know, it's a multitude of projects. And I'm scrolling through kind of quickly.
So there's Cottage right there. For, so it was Willows. What else?
So, but real quickly, when you're, we're looking at 186,015 up to 1 million, so that's the jump.
Right. And a third of that million is Willows. Then there's Radnor Memorial Park, and then there was another 70.
Yeah.
Radnor, so there wasn't much for the Trails there. We have a, we have a beautiful Trails plan, but there doesn't seem, okay. So what was that? What's right there? Stable Building Rehabilitation. Where's that?
Those are improvements that are, have been identified at Fenimore Woods.
Fenimore Woods, okay.
Yeah. Fenimore split over two.
Yeah, that's, I just couldn't see, I couldn't see the heading there.
Yep.
So the majority of that 1.3 is really Willows and Fenimore Woods.
I think you got Clemecron is in there, too.
And Clemecron.
Clemecron's in for 15.
Clemecron, well, no, not for 16. Look, it's empty.
It's 15.
15, but there's offsets there.
Yeah. So for Clemecron, we did, we showed the offsets for the grant applications.
Right now, we're talking about.
Most of which we've, we have, well, and understand that, as part of this, there's 571,000 that is township money, from the park impact fee, some of which we've realized, some of which is anticipated with future development.
Understood. It's a, it's a funding source, though, that we're showing right there.
Right. And to speak to the point of Carfac's role, is, we would ask their input on not only the funding sources that we're aware of, but other partnership ideas that they might have. I would agree with Commissioner Curly that we, that Carfac would not give an opinion as to whether a comfort station should go in one park versus another. But consistently, they have been able to take a look at our, our funding situations from a, from an outsider's perspective at a 30,000-foot view, and they always provide information that is useful and helpful. So that's, in working with them, that's what we would look for. And they always, to their credit, they always are sensitive to the fact that money is not limitless, that there are caps, that there are finite amounts that we have to work with, maybe even to the extent that some of the items in here need to be reprioritized to meet a smaller funding threshold. So that's where Carfac and their input is invaluable.
Other commissioners?
Yeah. I'd ask that the Carfac Committee take a close look at all the CapEx projects, and try to weed out the long-life aspects versus the short-life aspects. The reason I think this is important, I'll give you one example. If you're doing a park, and you're planting grass, and it costs you $60,000 to plant grass, you wouldn't want to use a 30-year bond for that. But if you're building a comfort station that has a 30-year life, you certainly would want to use a bond for that. So I think Carfac may be able to go through the list of capital projects, and maybe tease out what percentage is long-life asset versus short-life, and then come to us with a strategy of funding long-term, using bonds and revenue, you know, revenue for the short life, bonds for the long life. And that way, we can, we can, we don't have to borrow all the money. And we, and we also don't want to not borrow some money, because we talk about this all the time. You want to share the cost and the burden for these improvements with not only the current taxpayers, but all the future taxpayers in the next 30 years. So, you know, I think to be fair to the current taxpayers, and, you know, I did vote against our last bond issue, because I promised my constituents I wouldn't vote for new debt. But the reality, I've been speaking about capital projects since I came on the board, I'm always concerned about who's going to pay for the pipes under the street, and the streets, for that matter. So I, you know, if Carfac can help us. So I, you know, if Carfac can help us understand what percentage of each project is long-life versus short-life, that would be a big bonus to the board, I think we'd make better decisions with that.
John, and just to show what some of the other boards are doing, the Parks Board did a lot of that, because I think they were concerned, the same question you had, is they looked at some that disappeared off their capital list, that Steve actually took off some of those to say, a lot of those are maintenance items that his crew's going to work on over the winter time, because some of those they saw as though they disappeared off their capital list, which those are actually items off that list.
And that's a good thing.
So, exactly. So I think that, the work that they did is they actually saw a lot of that stuff, but it's one of the decisions the board made a number of years ago, is that we're not going to be borrowing money for short-term items like police cars that have a three- or four-year life, we're not going to be taking 30-year bonds out anymore, so.
Yeah, and then two, two really, really quick observations. First of all, debt, in an effort to limit the amount of new debt, understand that debt falls off, a certain amount of debt falls off every year, so we're constantly paying debt down, so there's always a little bit more threshold. And the second, well, the, the second part of that is that the bonds themselves can be structured to match different maturities. So if we had a particular asset that we thought was only going to give us 30 years of useful life, we can issue a 30-year bond in this, at the same time we issue some bonds for 30. It can be structured so that maturities for specific items are matched, so we're not paying for 30 years on an asset that gives us a shorter life.
So like a 20-year bond for a 20-year asset life?
Yes.
Versus a 30-year bond for 30-year asset life?
Yeah, that can all be structured in the bond deal itself. So we can make sure that we're not overborrowing or overpaying on assets that are no longer in service.
When we, when we talk about a bond as a 30-year bond, it's not, the whole bond isn't 30 years unless you structure it that way. It's, it's, it's a ladder, so some of it matures in one, two, three, five, 10, 15 to 20 years.
Got it. Any other commissioner, a discussion on funding?
I just, can I just make one last comment? The, the, what I would want to see and hope to see out of Carfac is sort of a broad view of the options, because obviously there's, you can do a millage increase, and obviously there's bond, and, and we'd like to hear their opinion on of those things. But there are also other ways that we've talked about and are out there, which is the public-private partnership, there's, we have this new park impact fee, what, what is that going to look like to us in the next year? We have a lot of new residences and dorm rooms coming in, and how much is that going to yield? We don't, we haven't gotten our heads around that yet, and how, you know, that's money we can use towards capital expenditures, especially it has to go towards the parks. So, so that's kind of the, the alternate ways that we can get funding for these projects that I'd really like them to, to spend some time thinking through.
You want to make your motion?
Okay, I, I had moved, and I'll move again, to request of Carfac an analysis of the different options of how we would find funding for capital spending needs.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Other commissioner comment?
Do we want to add the element that John identified, that identified the life cycle? It seems reasonable to me.
Okay, I'll add the phrase at the end with particular attention to the life of assets and how we would pay for them, different types of assets.
Jimmy, you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more board discussion?
Yeah, my sense is one of the things that we have to do is smooth the revenue stream. Do we need to elaborate that in the motion, or is that embedded in the concept?
I think that's embedded.
Any public comment on the motion?
Yes, Dan Sherry, Wayne, this is the second vote after the start of the regular meeting after reorganization. Last time I was up here, I brought up executive sessions and the fact that there had not been an announcement. Newly-minted President Spengler stated something pretty rapidly after I left the lecturn about there being an executive session, and then you said one of two things, Commissioner Spengler, either "and" matters were discussed, or "land matters" were discussed.
Land, L-A-N-D matters.
Land matters were discussed, okay. The specific provision for executive sessions regarding the land matters is not merely land matters, it's acquisition of or disposition of land by the township. So this board met an executive session tonight for reorganization exclusively for the purposes of either buying land or disposing of land?
Yes.
That was the exclusive basis for it. Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passes seven to zero. Now we have a discussion on the conditional use hearing and orders process. Mr. John?
I'd ask this to be on the agenda, just to give the public opportunity to hear and understand why and what the basis was for the Board of Commissioners to meet in an executive session to discuss the order governing Villanova's approval. So John Rice, we've given John Rice, our solicitor, time to collect his thoughts, put in writing his arguments and the rationale for him allowing the Board of Commissioners to meet in an executive session and discuss that, so we'll let John give us his explanation now.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. The, the two issues that came up, and I think there was some confusion when the issues came up regarding the purpose of the executive session in advance of the actual vote on the Villanova conditional use decision, which occurred on November 24th, was what was the basis for the board meeting and deliberating the evidence, the testimony, et cetera. As the board knows, the only people in the room were the board and myself, there's no other staff. Commissioner Fisher had recused herself, so the six commissioners, Schaefer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schaefer had recused herself, so the six commissioners and I reviewed what had happened during the course of the several nights of testimony. And as you recall, there were multiple parties, all who presented testimony and evidence, all who made arguments, and all who submitted written suggestions, conditions, et cetera. So that was the purpose, because ultimately there had to be a, an order and a decision rendered by this board within a specific timeframe. You have 60 days from the end of the receipt of testimony, sworn testimony, unless that gets extended by the property owner, the applicant, to render a written decision. So I think the schedule was that you had until December 8th was the 60th day, you met an executive session with me, and then voted on November 24th. The written order and decision went out about a week after that to all the parties. The, the issue that was raised by Mr. Sherry, and I think Ms. Peroni, at the meeting in December, was that the charter does not permit that. I think Commissioner Curly had asked me during that meeting, under what section of the charter was that meeting held, and I said at that meeting, the litigation exception. So that was the purpose of the memo that I put together, was to spell that out, why a conditional use proceeding, why the township is a party in a conditional use proceeding. Townships are always parties in zoning hearings, whether it's a conditional use proceeding or a zoning hearing board proceeding. There's a separate statute that governs zoning hearing boards, it's in Section 908 of the MPC, which basically says that township is always a party to a zoning hearing board proceeding, and that's the case whether the township actually ever shows up. You are always a party to those types of land use decisions, you always have the right to file an appeal, whether you even show up at the zoning hearing and take a position. Now, I've done that, you've directed me to go to the zoning hearing board over the last few years on a handful of occasions, but the township's interest is to make sure that, whether it's a conditional use proceeding, or a special exception, or even a curative amendment, which would be heard in front of this board, that you're, that the testimony, the evidence, whatever the applicant is proposing, and in this case it was Villanova's building project, met the requirements of your zoning ordinance. That's the, the window that Villanova had to put on testimony. Anyone opposing that could put on contrary testimony. There was some contrary testimony put on, township sat there, represented by Mr. Bowler as special counsel, also called witnesses in support of certain conditions. So it's not a traditional type of litigation, it's not common pleas litigation, it's not appellate litigation, but it is litigation. That's very clear under the law. So to say that an executive session to discuss a conditional use application isn't permitted under the charter just simply ignores what the MPC permits and what the MPC requires. So that was the basis under the charter, and separately, as you know in my memo, you have the ability to meet with legal counsel for things that aren't spelled out in the charter. One of the, and the Supreme Court has recognized that, there's a couple cases under the Sunshine Act, which has a different list of exceptions than what's in the charter. They match up, but the language is a little bit different between the two. So one of the things, the attorney-client privilege is something that the charter can't abrogate, and there's other privileges that the charter can't abrogate, that this board could sit and meet and discuss, a criminal investigation. There's no criminal investigation exception in the charter, but it's certainly something that, and you've had occasion to discuss with the manager and I and the chief of police, criminal investigations over the years. That's not something that anyone could seriously argue should be deliberated publicly, for a lot of reasons, obvious reasons. So this is not an exclusive list that's in the charter, there's other reasons. I wanted to just address in my memo the conditional use proceeding, because I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding as to what that is, it's not a subdivision land development application yet, that will come in front of the board next. I think they, Villanova has filed a, a land development plan. So, you know, that is not a similar type of proceeding as a conditional use proceeding, that's not quasi-judicial. That is something that you can take ex parte communications from parties regarding that when that's in front of you. It's a different procedure, it's more legislative, it's got some elements of a judicial proceeding, but it's a different type of animal under the MPC. The MPC clearly draws that distinction. The other issue, and I don't want to belabor this, I think that the memo spells out the reasons why, and the reasons why I believe there's no violation here of either the charter or state law, is in a conditional use proceeding, the board is charged, just as a zoning hearing board is, is charged with making its decision based upon the testimony that gets presented in the room, not upon public comment, not upon being pigeonholed in the grocery store and someone, it's got to be based upon the testimony, the sworn testimony and evidence, or you run a risk of having your decision overturned. So there's an element of, and another reason to me privately to deliberate, not to vote, just to deliberate, the voting has to be done publicly, which you did, per the charter requirement, I think Section 209G requires you to vote publicly. But the deliberations is a chance for the hearing board to argue about the testimony and the evidence, about what conditions are appropriate, what conditions are legal, what conditions would likely be overturned on an appeal, and then come to some kind of a conclusion, and that's what you did. And you had a debate, you had a disagreement, an executive session, and then you had a vote in front of you in order with conditions, which were all submitted by the parties, and they were summarized for you, that's what you ended up voting on. You then had another opportunity to publicly deliberate and argue about those conditions, get the public's comment on those conditions and what was in front of you. There is an element of meeting privately to have a full and fair discussion about what has been testified in these types of applications. They're contentious, you had a lot of parties, I understand a lot of the residents are unhappy with the result, but the, the process and the procedure was per your charter and per the MPC, and it's a well-established procedure. This is not something that just we made up on the spot for this application. You did a similar, you filed a similar process on 115 Stratford and on Ardrossen. I sat down here in front of the hearing officer and called witnesses, presented testimony to ensure, again, that the ordinance that Ardrossen filed their conditional use application under followed density modification requirements. I mean, there's a lot of dimensional criteria that we went through in that hearing that we asked questions about, you know, Roger Phillips and Steve were involved in reviewing the application, and we proposed conditions. I'm sitting there representing the township as a party in that case. So, not to belabor it anymore, I'm sure there's a lot of people that want to make a lot of comments, but I think the, and again, there's a difference between being unhappy with the result and then attacking the process because of that. I mean, substantively, I understand there were conditions that could have been imposed, or might have been imposed, that weren't imposed, there were a lot of conditions that were offered up that were obviously not conditions that were supported by the testimony and the record, and that's just, to me, an invitation for an appeal and more cost and litigation to the township.
Well, John, if we, if we did another conditional use next year, and the board decided they wanted, didn't want an executive session, they wanted to do it publicly, you would be opposed to that for all those reasons?
I, I think it depends on the nature of it, Commissioner Spengler, and how many parties are involved. I mean, I, I've seen boards deliberate simple conditional use applications where there's no parties, the township's not opposing it, but the ordinance requires a conditional use approval. I mean, there's all kinds of conditional uses, because every municipality can, all has a different zoning ordinance. You could have a conditional use that if you want to add, I can think of one municipality who we represent, they require a conditional use hearing anytime you put more than one principal use on a property, because they want to check parking, they want to check stormwater, et cetera. So those types of applications, because they're, they're not all the same, rarely have any opposition.
Yeah.
And the township typically is in favor of it, but the ordinance requires a hearing, requires a court reporter, so it's going to depend on that. I think a contested application, I think there's a risk of doing what you did in executive session publicly, that the record somehow gets impacted negatively by doing that publicly.
Well, then, when you, you said, after our executive session, we came down here and then the public can have comments, but then you said we can't take into account public comments, only the written record, how does that jive?
Well, I mean, on, on the law, you can only take what written testimony and evidence is, but you're always going to have, you're going to have public comment, no, I don't think anyone is going to explore whether or not something that someone said under public comment caused the whole board to vote a certain way. I mean, it's, it's possible.
But what you're saying is if someone comes up in public comment with a new idea?
Or hands you, hands you an exhibit.
And, and the whole board said, that's a great idea, and we incorporate it, you just leave yourself up for appeal because it wasn't part of the record?
Correct.
And you would, you would lose that?
Well, if you, let's say you Well, if you, let's say you were handed an exhibit during a public deliberation of this particular matter, and then the board fashioned a condition incorporating that. I think the record, you have a problem now with the record on appeal. I mean, that's why there's got to be some, I mean, there was public comment at the end of all the testimony before you deliberated in executive session. There was public comment, and the residents, you know, did a great job participating and making their arguments. And then you had your executive session, and then you had the second public session. But the actual written decisions got to be based on sworn testimony.
Any other commissioner questions or comment?
Well, yeah, I think, John, thank you for your comments, and I've read through John's arguments and his document, and, you know, I think anyone would have a difficult time countering those arguments. They're good, sound legal arguments, but they're legal arguments, and in absence of a second lawyer going head-to-head with you, you know, presenting their legal arguments, it's somewhat, it's somewhat one-sided. But John's job is to advise us as far as the legal aspects of our work up here. Now, I've said before that while we have to take advice from our legal, from our solicitor, we also have the ability to set policy up here. And unless that policy puts the taxpayers in a bad position, we have a right to set those policies and act in a certain way. We also have to be cognizant of practices. So this board, you know, under normal conditions deliberates in public and before casting a vote allows public comment on just about every, we always allow public comment before every vote. So if we want to look at this from a perspective of past practice, everything else that happened in 2014 followed that paradigm. We deliberated in public, we allowed public comment, and then we voted. Everyone in the room, anyone at home that wanted to be part of that process understood the process and understood that that would be the way it would happen. But with this order, this is something new. We don't do this every day. I think there was a disconnect between not only the public, but maybe even some sitting commissioners. I did not understand that we would deliberate in detail that order. What I understood was that we would vote on that order in public and deliberate on that order in public. Even though I was told that we would meet prior to the public meeting and discuss it, you know, there's a difference between learning something in executive session, discussing something in executive session, and deliberating. In my opinion, all deliberation by an elected body should happen in a public. Now, the case law that Solicitor Rice has quoted in his letter, in his opinion, is pretty clear, but most of the case law that I looked at concerned the zoning hearing board, not an elected board. There's a difference. So we were acting in a quasi-judicial format that night, so in some ways you could argue that we were like the zoning hearing board and doing the type of work that the zoning hearing board does, but we're not the zoning hearing board. The public knows that the zoning hearing board has the right to deliberate certain things, things in executive session, but the public also expects that the Board of Commissioners, the elected body, the governing body of this township, do most of that deliberation, if not all of it, in public. So I think we're in a bad spot here in that the expectation from the public was that we would do all of that final voting on that order, the content of that order, in public, and that would allow the public a chance to, you know, agree or disagree with where we were headed with it. But instead, what happens is we have this other process that is not expected. And while it's legal and while we have a legal right to do it, it doesn't mean it's right, and it is not necessarily meeting the expectations of the public. So in my opinion, I don't know if, I don't think we violated any laws, but I think, you know, legal laws, but I think we've violated some public trust, and I think we violated some expectations here. And for that reason, I don't agree with what happened. I think it was wrong. I think it was incorrect. And again, the case law, you know, if you want to get into the details, the Kennedy versus Upper Melford, that was about a zoning hearing board. It was not about an elected official, elected officials, not about a Board of Commissioners or supervisors. So, and if you go through all the case law, if you look at the Sunshine Act, if you look at all the written guidance on the Sunshine Act, it's all about the zoning hearing board in these cases of quasi-judicial deliberations, not about elected officials. So I just want to, I want to stress that while the arguments are sound that I've heard, it doesn't, it doesn't rub well with me, and I'm certain it doesn't rub well with the public, that we did this, that this is the way we did it. So again, the public sees on the agenda, literally, I'll say, hours before the meeting, this order that we're about to vote on, and they're all scratching their heads saying, "What is this? We've never done this before. This is not the way it normally is." Normally, that order would be written up, presented to the public, it would be out there for some time, then the board would deliberate on that order, the contents of that order, in public, section by section, and we would give yea and nay votes on each part, and that's not how we did it. It was kind of, you know, decided upon in private in many ways, whether it was individual commissioners, but and/or in executive session. So I'll just leave it with, my opinion is that we did it wrong, we should never do it that way again. I don't have the power to reverse what has happened. I don't have the authority to do that, but I will agree with anyone who says you shouldn't have done it that way, because we shouldn't have. It should have been more of a public process, and more importantly, we should have set expectations all along. I was doing that as much as I could, but I, quite frankly, I didn't really understand that last step where we met in executive session and then came out here about a half an hour later, or a few days later, and voted on it in public. So it's quite different. That's my only comment.
I would just like to say, John, that there wasn't anything in executive session that I don't think the board would have minded discussing here publicly. But here's the issue, John, here's the issue. Let's, let's go back, and the Board of Commissioners doesn't have an executive session, okay? And we do everything publicly here, and we turned Villanova down, and they appealed to a court and win because of the process we followed. Then what do you think about that? I mean, that's, you know, in this instance, it passed, so Villanova is not going to appeal our decision. But the reason we do this, I think John will tell you, the reason we do this is because if you decide to turn it down after your discussions, but you did everything publicly, and we voted on things that weren't part of the record, that people got passionate about, and the commissioners were against it, so we voted with the public out there, and then Villanova, the public, oh, they turned Villanova down. Villanova can't build that. Villanova goes to court for a year, and the court says, "You guys heard, you did this all publicly, you went away from the record, and we're granting Villanova this approval." I mean, I've seen this happen on South Devon Avenue, Conestoga Road. This Board of Commissioners turned down them building 20 houses and putting a traffic light there and taking every piece of tree and vegetation down, bringing five feet of fill, and it was disastrous. And this board voted unanimously to turn it down. The Delaware County Court gave them permission to do that. Okay? So that's what John is talking about, is that, yeah, in this instance, the board approved it, so Villanova's not going to appeal. But if we turn Villanova down, what do we leave ourselves open for? And that's the issue, John, that we have to grapple with.
Well, let me comment on, first of all, we didn't discuss anything that wasn't part of the record. And my view is that the review in executive session of the conditions of the conditional use ordinance was an impermissible expansion of the rights granted under the Sunshine Act. In other words, we took liberties and said we are allowed to increase the amount of materials that are covered under the Sunshine Act. The conditional use ordinance's conditions were not litigation. That's just not litigation. It was a list of conditions that were all part of the record and that were not to be litigated. The litigation would have surrounded, if it ever occurred, the approval or disapproval of the conditional use ordinance itself. What these were, were specific elements that were agreed to specifically or not agreed to by the applicant. So I reject the concept that this is something that would have ended up in court as not part of the record. It was part of the record. And also, the fact that it wasn't litigation, this was something short of litigation and is not covered under the Sunshine Act. And as such, I do believe that it was a violation of our responsibility to negotiate in the public.
The issue before us tonight is discussing moving forward, because we might get another one of those one or two or three months from now, and everyone's entitled to their opinion, but in the end, the majority of the board will decide, you know, this issue, how we're going to move forward. So is there any constructive comments anybody has about moving forward?
Yeah, so I'd like to comment, I'm not going to comment about anything that happened. I wasn't a part of it, and I, I don't think I can speak to it. Looking forward, you know, this is murky. You know, it's no surprise that we're having this discussion. It is murky because ordinarily, we serve as an elected body. And ordinarily, when we make decisions with a developer or a landowner in front of us, we are serving as elected officials, and public comment and public participation is a huge part of the process. And often, our decisions are very informed by what neighbors come up and what the neighbors have to say. They're the ones living right next door, and they have the most to say. In this particular situation, when you have conditional use, we're not serving as the elected body, and we're not making our decision based on public participation. We can't be. MPC says you cannot make your decisions based on that. Your decision in conditional use only is on the official record. Okay? So we have this whole rigmarole where we have sworn testimony and we have exhibits and transcripts, and that's what you make your decision on. And your decision is as, not as an elected body, it's as this quasi-judicial body. So it's murky. It's very confusing as to what rules apply. And looking forward, I would say I see the merit in treating those decisions more like judicial decisions, and I can see why the MPC is set up like that, because it makes sense. However, it does create a thorny relations issue with the people who are participating, especially for those who have not participated in the hearings. If you're not a party to the hearings and you haven't had sworn testimony, then you're sort of left out of the whole conditional use process, except for that one opportunity for public comment at the end. I would never, I don't think I would be comfortable having a policy saying from this day forward, all conditional use deliberations have to be in public. I don't think that that's a good way to approach this. I do think we need to take it on a case-by-case basis and think long and hard about this particular process in this case and how contentious and how upsetting it got some people in the community, and take it on a case-by-case basis and consider having our deliberation. I don't think it would change the result, it wouldn't have changed this result, and I don't think it'll change many results. We would just have to be very, very careful and articulate constantly that the decisions and the deliberations were being made on the record and not on the room that night and whatever came up in the room that night. And we'd have to be very careful to cover all of that on the record, so that if there was an appeal, it was clear that we were still acting as judges and not as elected officials that night.
Sure, I'll take my turn. All right, so first, the technical matter of whether it's allowable or not allowable. I view it as allowable. A litigation matter is allowed to be discussed in executive session. The solicitor has told us that this is a litigation matter because it's in an action before an adjudicative body that's appealable, so to me, that satisfies the criteria. So I view it as allowable. Then the next issue would be, you know, to speak to John's issue of whether it's the right thing to do. So I see the Sunshine Act as expressly allowing it. I see the MPC as implying that procedure or sort of specifying, seeing the logic of that procedure. I see it supported by case law and the case law that was provided to us, so there's a sound basis for it. There's one thing that we haven't yet discussed is that most of the time when you have a conditional use, you're, one of the reasons you have a conditional use is you're protecting against very undesirable uses. So things like porn theaters, tattoo parlors, and your traditional, I don't know, undesirable uses. And if we are afforded the opportunity to go into executive session to protect against those uses infringing upon us and we don't use that, I think that would, that would be a mistake. So I can see, I can see why there would be a time where we would say, "Okay, there's no need for executive session." But similar to what Elaine said a moment ago, I don't see myself supporting a policy that says the board will never go into executive session on conditional use applications. To me, that's something that's done on a, on a case-by-case basis. Then just some mitigating factors. I did see the, I mean, the precedent is there, just on our board. It was in the previous, the two applications. It's my understanding that this application, we proceeded the way that we proceeded with the previous applications, and it was my, and we, for better or for worse, we proceeded the way that I thought we were proceeding, meaning that it was clear to me. If there's an issue with expectations, then we have to address that. Everybody will recognize that if the expectations weren't clear. We have to do a better job of making them clear, but I think that we did follow precedent. Others said this also, no one's opportunity to debate was circumvented, meaning everyone had the opportunity, when we did speak about it in public, to present any item, and nobody was, nobody was cut off. So in conclusion, I just see it that I think the process was legal. I think it's allowable by the Sunshine Act and other items. Regarding Villanova, I don't see any action that we should take or will take to undo it, undo the previous decision that we made. And then regarding future decisions, future conditional use, I'd be willing to, I'd entertain that on a case-by-case basis, but I don't think it would be prudent for us to adopt a policy that forbid us from using executive session for conditional use hearings.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Bill, you mentioned a couple of times that we're going to have another conditional use within the next three or four months. What did you mean by that specifically?
You could. I didn't say we're going to. I don't know anything. Any public comment? Okay.
Yes, Dan Sherry, Wayne. Let's talk about first how this came about in terms of this proposed order. At the meeting, when this proposed order was being addressed, this is the November 24th, 2014 meeting, John Rice and Mr. Spengler had a back-and-forth on the record regarding how this proposed order was developed. Just quote it. "Mr. Rice, what I presented to the board in the executive session were the things that there was, you know, agreement on from the applicant." Doesn't sound like litigation to me, as Mr. Booker points out. Next line, "Mr. Spengler, you also had input from each commissioner on the different issues." Mr. Rice, "Correct." "That might have been something nice to hear about in public. Which commissioner was submitting what?" Next line, "Mr. Spengler, what we thought should be in here." Mr. Rice, "Correct, right." "Mr. Spengler, it's not just Villanova doing this. The commissioners told you what they were in favor of and what they weren't in favor of." Again, would have been nice to know that in public. Who was proposing what? Mr. Rice, "Right." "Mr. Spengler, I did. I told you that." Mr. Rice, "I think I spoke with all of you about conditions that you thought were acceptable or not acceptable, and that's how you got the order prepared." Now, after those comments from Mr. Rice, I came up and asked, "What's the basis for the executive session?" What Mr. Rice said? First, he started talking about part litigation. Then he started talking about quasi-judicial. Then he started talking about the Sunshine Act. And then finally, he made this statement. "You're allowed to meet in executive session for things beyond what's in your charter. You've done that traditionally over the years." That's where we find ourselves right now, that comment from the solicitor. "You're allowed to meet in executive session for things beyond what's in your charter." Now, we're going to unpack here in a second the statements Mr. Rice makes in his legal memorandum, but I want to give a little bit of history. memorandum, but I want to give a little bit of history, because you, after all, paid Mr. Rice to write that legal memorandum for you. Couple of years ago, this board formed what was known as the Charter Review Committee. You remember that, right? You all remember that, the Charter Review Committee? What was the Charter Review Committee tasked with? Looking at the charter, evaluating the charter, going through whether there's anything in the charter, subject to amendments, referendums, changes. Pertent part of the charter is 2.09D, executive sessions. "Executive or closed sessions of this board shall be held only in accordance with provisions and purposes defined by law," would be the Sunshine Act, Pennsylvania Supreme Court precedent, Magna Carta, U.S. Constitution, Code of Hammurabi, whatever. "And only when one of the more, one or more of the subjects which follow are under consideration." A, B, C, D. That's it. Section 2.09E, which immediately follows it, that was rescinded. You guys got rid of that, remember? That was ordinance, and then referendum, and it's gone. So now you have John Rice telling you that you can meet for beyond what's in your charter, and yet overseeing the Charter Review Committee, he doesn't apparently recommend that 2.09D be changed, removed, rescinded at all. And what's that cause? What's that cause? That causes members of the public to rely on that section. It's in the charter. Tonight, Mr. Spingler and Mr. Higgins took an oath. An oath to do what? To uphold that charter. So again, you pay Mr. Rice to oversee the Charter Review Committee. Nothing is done at all to Section 2.09D. Nothing at all. Public relies on it, and now Mr. Rice says, at the end of November 2014, you can meet what's beyond in the charter. So even if Mr. Rice is completely correct in his legal memorandum, and he's not, that doesn't bode well for Mr. Rice. Sounds like there was a pretty big omission that took place, to the extent Mr. Rice wanted this board to be able to go into executive session whenever authorized by Pennsylvania's Supreme Court precedent, or the Sunshine Act.
Then the board will...
Could have just, could have just, could have just requested that that entire section be removed, and then you would have voted on it by ordinance, and then that would have been subjected to public referendum. Didn't happen. Now, as to Mr. Rice's memorandum, which he again prepared at this township's expense. By the way, just as an aside, I'm sure Ms. Peroni, who's in the audience tonight, who's part of that Charter Review Committee, can come up here and tell you all how many hours were invested in that Charter Review Committee. That will be important to know. And at any time at all, was it ever proposed in Section 2.09D, which limits when you can go into executive session, whether that was ever proposed for omission? I think I know the answer to that, but I'll hear it from Ms. Peroni directly. Now, as to the case law cited by Mr. Rice, first and foremost, my letter to you, I talked about the section of the Sunshine Act, Section 708C, which states, "Nothing in this section or Section 707 relating to exceptions to open meetings shall be construed to require that any meeting be closed to the public, nor shall executive session be used as a subterfuge to defeat the purpose of Section 704 relating to open meetings." I've talked about that section at multiple meetings, and put it in my letter to you all. Do you know how many times John Rice talks about that section in his memorandum, which he had weeks to prepare, and which you agreed to pull off the agenda so he could have the time to address it? How many times he deals with that section? Zero. Not at all. Just ignores it. Or conversely, tries to steer the discussion into, oh, the Sunshine Act allows all of these exceptions, including quasi judicial.
Are you going to...
How many times?
Excuse me, are you going to discuss, are you going to discuss his memorandum? That's what we're here to discuss, and moving forward in the future...
I was just talking what was included in his memorandum. I don't appreciate that interruption.
No, no, I'm just...
It's not in his memorandum at all. That section isn't in his memorandum at all. Why isn't it in his memorandum? Why will he not address that? Why will he not answer the very simple question, "Does the Sunshine Act, given that subsection, trump Radnor's charter?" The answer, why he won't answer it, is very simple. You can, pursuant to that subsection I just read to you, decide via legislation like the charter, that you never want to go into executive session for any purpose. You can do that, and you will not run afoul of the Sunshine Act. That's what it says. It is never required. You only have a conflict if the Sunshine Act says you must, and Radnor's charter says you may not. What happened here with Radnor's charter, which was last subject to review by the Charter Review Committee that John Rice oversaw, is that they have taken the Sunshine Act and narrowed it. You don't overflow the banks, you narrow it. As a result, it's perfectly fine that you have that legislation at the local level. And you can't just say that you're ignoring it, or try to pound round pegs in the square holes by saying, "It's litigation." That's another thing in John Rice's memorandum.
Mr. Sherry, I'm trying...
He talks about in his, in his memorandum, which is the, which is the issue you wanted me to confine it to, in his memorandum, that litigation isn't defined in the charter. That's what he says in his memorandum. Litigation's not defined in the charter.
Mr. Sherry, can you answer one question for me?
Now, why would that be important regarding John Rice? Again, even if that was somehow ambiguous, who had the ability to address it with the Charter Review Committee? And say, "I want it expanded, to include potential litigation." Again, John Rice. What is the question, Commissioner Spingler?
The issue that I have, the issue I have, maybe you can explain it to me, is that if we turned Villanova down, we did not have an executive session, and items were discussed, and we turned Villanova down on items that were not on the record, that people passionately talked about at the meeting, and we agreed with them, and we changed, and we turned Villanova down, enlisted those reasons, that were not part of the record, and Villanova appealed, and they won that decision, where would we be?
So if you commit negligence by making a decision based upon a record that was not supposed to be the record, you believe you should still win. Here's my response to that. Get out of the realm of the hypothetical. That doesn't make any sense. Okay? You are obligated, as commissioners, to follow the law, the law of the Commonwealth and the local law. To the extent you're worried that certain people up on the dais with you will become distracted during a public meeting that is required under the charter, and that some commissioner up on the dais is just going to get confused, and suddenly, for a purpose not authorized by law, decline an applicant's request, my response is, don't commit acts of negligence in that regard.
The issue is...
Instead, follow the charter. Or, or, here's the other way to go about it. And again, this goes back on John Rice. To the extent this board wants to use the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, to the greatest extent authorized by law, and wishes to use Pennsylvania Supreme Court precedent, to the greatest extent authorized by law, it's very simple. You eliminate Section 2.09D in the charter, just as you did to Section 2.09E in the charter. It's by an ordinance, and then you got to get the public to approve it referendum. Lots of luck with that. Public's not going to like that. Public's not going to like it, but maybe you can make it persuasive, persuasively to the public. But you didn't do it. And the solicitor didn't recommend it.
So your comment is, your comment is, is that in moving forward...
Not moving forward. I want to make very clear about this. This is, no, no, don't summarize my comment. I'll summarize my comment. Fact is, the charter is unambiguous, as to when you can go into executive session. That's that shall and only when. For whatever reason, this board was provided advice that you can meet outside of what's the charter authorizes.
And we can either accept or reject that advice.
It doesn't matter. You're talking about summarizing what I'm trying to tell you. It's very clear that you weren't supposed to be doing that. Moving forward should be no different than what we did in the past, which is follow the charter. If we don't like what's in the charter, there are ways to deal with it. Not have a sweeping declaration by the solicitor at a public meeting that, let me just clear very carefully here, very carefully...
Well, the issue is that the board has your recommendation, and we appreciate it, and will take it.
Oh, I'm not finished yet. I haven't finished, I haven't finished yet with, with Mr. Rice's memorandum. Mr. Rice's memorandum also, I think somebody should ask him this. Mr. Fisher, you seem that you've read the case law cited to by John Rice, and you found it persuasive, for whatever reason, I have no idea, honestly. I read it, and it's about as responsive as the township's response was when I requested the meeting that Bud Hurst had occurred as a result of the initiation of the complaint against Jim Higgins.
Can you address the issue and not have sidebars?
It's simply not responsive. How many of the cases cited by John Rice deal with a situation where a township has taken the Sunshine Act and narrowed it, in a matter that Radnor's charter does? How much of that, how much of the case law deals with it? The answer is zero. None whatsoever. So again, when you go to your solicitor, and you ask him to do certain things, oversee the Charter Review Committee, for which you pay him to do, and review objectively what happened with respect to this particular executive session, you should, just as this public has the right to believe that this board will follow the charter, including Section 2.09D, this board should likewise have the expectation that John Rice will address the issue. Why, John Rice, does the Sunshine Act trump Radnor's charter in light of the section that Mr. Sherry brought to our attention, which states that nothing in the Sunshine Act shall mandate an executive session? Why is it, John Rice, if you're claiming that the issue is, as Elaine Paul Schaefer believes, murky? Interesting that Elaine Paul Schaefer recused herself from the Villanova issue, nevertheless believes the vote still would have worked out the same. Curious how she has that knowledge. Why, John Rice, when you were involved with the Charter Review Committee, why didn't you clarify this ambiguity? We paid you to look into this. Why didn't you, maybe in a definition section, spell out what you wanted litigation to be? Why didn't you seek to eliminate Section 2.09D? If you want to have that type of broad authorization.
We have your information.
Instead, it is abrogation of express language in the charter. It's untenable. It hurts the public's confidence in this board. It should be rectified. It should be rectified expeditiously, and in the future, since you want to know what you should do going forward. Anytime you make a request of the solicitor to evaluate and analyze the topic for you, I hope that you will hold him to that particular task. Not allow the conversation to be steered into a discussion why John Rice did everything right, according to John Rice. That benefits nobody, except maybe John Rice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. I'm Diane Edgell. I live on Spruce Tree Road. I appreciate Commissioners Fisher's comments at the outset, that, you know, having read the brief that Mr. Rice proffered, that it seemed persuasive. And I think as somebody who is licensed to practice law in the state, and has been a litigator for a while, you know, it's really important to hear both sides of an issue before you decide, you know, sort of what's the answer, because I think that there are certainly compelling arguments on both sides of most issues. To me personally, I think that Mr. Sherry's argument was more compelling than Mr. Rice's argument, but I will let it stand for itself, because it was certainly very ably laid out. The one thing that I really have to respond to goes back to, I think, a little dialogue between Mr. Rice and, and Mr. Spingler about how the peril exists that if you were to forego the executive session and doing what you did with the order and the conditions, that, that the potential arises then in the public milieu for something to happen that messes up the legality of the conditional use order. I think that's really a red herring, frankly. I mean, if, if you can't get it right in a public meeting, I mean, and Mr. Rice, I think, could certainly say, if somebody were to come up from the audience and try to proffer something persuasive to the commissioners after the close of the hearing, I think all that's required is for Mr. Rice to say, in a public meeting at that point, that, that there is no new testimony that can be received, and that the commissioners can't consider that. And so I don't really understand why there's any problem, why that creates a risk of you guys doing the wrong thing. Because if, if it creates that problem for him to bring that to your attention in public, in front of the township, then there's certainly no guarantee that it's going to get right, done right, in private, where there's no oversight. So I think it's a really specious argument, and I'm, I'm sort of disappointed that it was put out there as a justification. And I only just want to echo what Mr. Sherry said, I said, which is that I think not, not only is it important moving forward to really affirmatively say, "We are going to do these things in public, because we went through a really big process, and we have a really big history," you know, "and, and this is what, the policy that is going to reflect our values here in Radnor Township, that I think it's worth making a policy like this. If you subsequently found out it was untenable, or led to all the problems that Mr. Rice is concerned about, you can, you can roll it back. You can undo it. But to say, case by case, doesn't really embrace, I think, the values that would be embraced by saying, yeah, we're going to do this in the open, because look at all the problems, you know, and, and also the, the decision to not do this one in the public, given the contentiousness of this whole Villanova application, I think really, you know, sort of reinforces the lack of faith that many members of the community have in the decision-making process. So I would suggest that you do implement a policy requiring all of these discussions to be held in the open, in the sunshine, not in executive session. And I would also request that you go back and you redo this one, because I think you guys are still getting it wrong, and I think that there are so many people in the community who have no faith in the decisions that are being made in this room, and that personally is making me very sad. So I hope you take some time to reflect and back off of this one, because I think it's the right thing to do for everyone.
Again, my name is Christina Peroni, and I want to start by just saying that I served on the Charter Review Committee. We met over a year. We met about 30 times. We spent hundreds of hours privately, in small groups, and then together as groups, going through every single line of the charter. So we are intimately familiar with it, and I personally was appointed by the treasurer for this position on the Charter Review Committee, because I was very intimately involved with the charter, and working on enforcing the charter. So I would say, starting off, number one, this is not a gray area. This is not murky. It is black and white. It tells you when you're allowed to meet in, in public, and when, when you meet in private, and, and they are so limited. So the one area that they're talking about is litigation. Under Mr. Rice's argument, what he's basically saying is, every time there's a zoning meeting, that is equal to litigation. He's just put zoning equal to litigation. That's his justification for having a private meeting, because you're not allowed to meet in private unless it's litigation. That the township is actively involved in litigation, not it could be, because everything that happens, someone can sue anyone for any reason, we all know that. So that is completely erroneous. Secondly, he said, "The MPC requires that we have these conversations, and that we inform you and blah." The MPC does take care of zoning. The MPC does not go and trump the charter. The charter is something that you just put your hand on the Bible to, to uphold. The charter says you're not allowed to meet in private, unless it's active litigation. It is not murky. Next, Mr. Rice said, "This is a, people are upset and coming here because of this issue, because of the outcome." I will tell you, the outcome was horrific, but I am here because of the process. The process was dead wrong. And because it was dead wrong, you got a really horrible outcome. There were people who put together a list of 60 items. I believe Mr. Zankowski can attest to having, I can't even imagine how many hours you, your staff, put together on items that were really important for this issue. Things like turning lanes, things like stormwater, that were not legal issues. Those were things you were allowed to ask for. But now, under this, this auspices of litigation, we're pretending that you couldn't have gotten those things during the meeting. That is completely untrue. But that's how it was crafted, because Mr. Rice met with the solicitor for Villanova, their attorneys, and they negotiated on what things they're going to give and take. And then we were not allowed public comment during that, I think you'll remember, public comment was completely shut down. So it was, I was, okay, it was completely shut down, Mr. Rice. You'll have to watch the tapes. So I would also say that in this regard of having an attorney, you know, you hire people to work for you, and I've said this in the past, when Mr. Rice came on, he was all about openness, because we had just gone through a horrible time. And now, as time goes on, you just are supporting and supporting and supporting... And now, as time goes on, you just are supporting and supporting and supporting whatever the private agendas are, and, you know, you just get too comfortable. It is time for Mr. Rice to go. It is time to put out an RFP for a new solicitor. I would say you should not pay for this advice that he just gave you, because you go hire another attorney. I would implore, hire another attorney that does this sort of law, not Mr. Sherry, not Ms. Edbrill, and not me as a fake lawyer. Go hire a real lawyer. Go hire a municipal lawyer and see what they say. I would guarantee it is 100% going to be Mr. Rice made a mistake. So then maybe he'll take that off his hours, but paying for it is a whole nother issue. So I would ask one of you to consider, go get another lawyer and go find out, because you say you're worried about Villanova? What about people in the audience who are saying, "Well, maybe we should sue the township"? You're worried about denying Villanova? What about the people who are affected by what's going to happen? You know, everyone can sue anyone, so you can't use that as a place to hide.
Thank you.
I'm just going to check my notes to see if there was anything else I had to add. Yeah, there is just one more issue that I think is worth considering, and that is that how do you evaluate the support you get from your staff? Well, your staff's not here right now, but your staff put in so many hours into this Villanova situation, where the engineers were requiring stuff and asking for them. Mr. Zankowski was asking for things. People were recommending things that you pay for, and pay a lot of money for, and you ignored most of them. There's a list of 60, and I'd really ask all of you, and maybe some people in the audience who work together with the township to put that list of 60 items together, should send it back to you guys and see which of those, which you had every right to require. Which of those you got? It's because Mr. Rice sat down and negotiated in private for you, and then told you what you were going to agree to. So, bad process, bad outcome.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Roberta Winters, I would like to speak from the league position that we support positions on openness of government proceedings. We expect high standards of professionalism and individual accountability in all the functions of the township, including personnel practices, as stated in the Home Rule Charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner have a comment before we move on?
David Woodbrimmar. I just wanted to say that I think in the last 25 or 30 minutes, you've probably heard the reason why things are held in public instead of behind closed doors, because if you didn't hear what was just said to you in the last 20 to 30 minutes, you're missing something big, because the people should have just convinced you, if you were paying attention, that you're wrong in this decision, and you need to do something to change it. And if you didn't hear that, I don't know what else I can say. That's the reason the process should be open. That's the reason we have it the way we do. If you want young people, I'm a high school teacher, if you want young people to vote, you need to find a way to support their reason to vote, and by holding things behind closed doors, you're not doing that for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maya Van Rossum, South Roberts Road in Brimmar. Just one observation, to speak to the comment of when you're making a decision on the record about whether or not it's appropriate to ask public comment to come forth and help inform your decision, and whether or not that necessarily means that you end up making a decision that's outside of the record, and therefore puts you outside of the bounds of the law. I just want to offer the observation that there are many, many ways to interpret the facts, the figures, the laws that are on any given record. That's why you have differences of opinion. That's why you have discussion. That's why amongst yourselves, you are interpreting, emphasizing, bringing forth different pieces of information at different points, to try to convince one another about what the appropriate outcome should be. When you ask for public comment in an on-the-record decision, you get that same kind of input. You get from the public, the many different ways you can emphasize, interpret, bring forth the facts, the figures, the statistics, the many different ways you can interpret and apply the law to that information. And so what you end up doing, when you have an on-the-record decision that is informed by public comment, is you don't end up making a decision that's outside of the bounds of the record, and therefore outside of the bounds of the law. You end up making a better decision based upon the record that is before you, within the bounds of the law, which is much more strong, much more well-informed, much more defensible in the eyes of the public, in the eyes of the applicant, in the eyes, hopefully of one another, in the eyes of your staff, and all the way around, you end up with a better decision. And I think it was well said by others, that one of the reasons why we ended up with a bad outcome here is because we had a bad process. And I, too, would urge you to please go back and reflect on the charter. Recognize that you did go beyond the bounds of your own law in the application of the process here. Please reconsider. Please rescind. Please go back and revisit. Thank you.
You have something to say?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few statements. I won't take it personally, but to say that we had a bad result is just a personal opinion on your part, and I disagree with it totally. And to say that the process was wrong, and faulty, and illegal, and whatever else was said, is also wrong. You can't, let's talk about the Rice memorandum. The attorney-client privilege is not set forth in a Home Rule Charter as a parameter for discussions in executive session by the Board of Commissioners. Nevertheless, it's a bedrock principle in American law. We can't have a body, a government body function without the protection of the attorney-client privilege. It protects confidential disclosures, some of which maybe show a weakness in your case. You would never enter a business deal or litigation without the protection of the attorney-client privilege. Secondly, as to the legal regime that we're supposed to follow, I really have to disagree with anybody that contends that the Home Rule Charter is the be-all and end-all of what we follow. Yes, it is, we are bound to follow it, but we are also bound to follow state law, state case law, municipal planning, municipality's planning code, the Sunshine Act, and where applicable, federal constitutional law. You have to have the full panoply of law, local, county, state, and federal. And secondly, or thirdly, I have no doubt that the Radnor zoning ordinance and the MPC and the Pennsylvania decisions set up our board as a quasi-judicial body that was in a environment where we had parties that potentially were adverse. Township was adverse to Villanova. The individual parties were adverse to Villanova. So there's no question that Mr. Rice, in my judgment, is correct when he characterizes the situation as a potential or actual litigation. And I'll follow the opinions of our solicitor, not the contentions of others. Now let's go to the decision of November 24th, 2014. The last thing I want, as an elected official who is sworn to uphold the law, is constituents that feel we somehow cut a backroom deal here, and didn't listen to you, and did wrong to you. And I know the longs have been out to many meetings, Mrs. Barker, Lynn Ellis, Sarah Pilling, the Baileys, and others, and I respect your participation and your comments, but the process that we went through was, on November 24th, was a culmination, I'm speaking of the public session now, of some 33 months of public meetings, meetings with our township manager, our township engineer, our zoning officer, our inferior bodies to this board, and as a result of that, we got to the threshold of a decision on November 24th. Leading up to that decision, there was circulated to the public a proposed order which reflected what we were told Villanova was amenable to agreeing to. And as I understand it, Villanova was not bound to agree to any of this. No legal requirement, they agree to any of the conditions in the order. All of that was negotiated. Secondly, we had in front of us, on November 24th, in the private, in the executive session, the list of contentions from the parties to the litigation, including Mr. Leonardi, the League of Women Voters, the citizens to preserve Radnor, and there were, as, there were not 60 contentions, Mrs. Peroni, there were 66, actually. I read them before the November 24th session. I'll give you an idea of what some of them were. They wanted a right-turn lane at the intersection of Eithon and Lancaster Avenue. They wanted a large sum of money to be paid by Villanova for signalization of six intersections along Route 30. They wanted a sound wall near the railroad line in the back of the property. They wanted a stormwater study at Villanova's expense, carrying all the way down to Clem McCrone Park. They wanted the rear windows of the dormitory sealed. They wanted an elevator on the pedestrian bridge. They wanted studies for, regarding two existing garages. They wanted an Eithon Avenue bike lane, maximum truck size for Eithon Avenue, and so forth and so on. I looked at all those conditions, and I looked at those requests, and I looked at what Villanova was willing to agree to, and put those competing concepts against the background of 33 months of study and hearings. And Villanova moved from a position in February of 2012 to November 24th, 2014, by doing, among other things, the following. They cut the size of the parking garage down by two stories. They moved the parking from those two stories to elsewhere on campus. They reduced the height of the dormitories. They reduced the, I'm sorry, they improved the aesthetics of the dormitory facades. They repositioned the parking garage from one location closer into the main parcel, and I believe they reduced the number of beds in the dormitories from 1,300 to 1,188. So to say that this was a decision that exclusively favored Villanova is totally wrong. The public was well-served. There were numerous meetings. Their voices were listened to. When somebody said that Mr. Zankowski went to a lot of meetings, and our staff went to a lot of meetings, and it all went for naught, that's not true. What our staff did was push Villanova to take positions that were not in their, strictly speaking, in their best interest, and the result was that we came up with a conditional order on November 24th that we signed off on.
Jim, the issue before us is moving forward, you know?
I understand that, but I do feel that there's, those of us that voted for the Villanova project have been impugned by a number of speakers tonight, and I guess I do take that personally.
And I want to sort of augment that with, I don't think that the issue is just, what do we do moving forward? I think the, I think the two of them are entwined. If we did something wrong, we should address it, and address it retroactively and going forward. I don't know if others feel differently, but my sense is it's not just moving forward.
And John Fisher, I have a lot of respect for you. You do very well for your constituents, but when you said that you didn't know what was going on on November 24th in the executive session, in the public meeting, you were there, and you didn't complain. You voted against it. You didn't say that the whole thing was illegal. Now you're coming in Monday morning quarterbacking and saying the whole thing was illegal. And also, you're treading on really-
Excuse me. Point of order. I did not say it was illegal. I never stated it was illegal. You just put words in my mouth that are incorrect, that is not true, and the point is, that executive session was not announced to the public prior to having it. There was no notice to the public, letting them know that we would do that. Okay?
We don't announce executive sessions before they happen. We announce them afterwards.
Well, we're allowed to announce them prior.
Again, it's the attorney-client privilege. We can't broadcast to the world what we're going to discuss privately.
Well, when you're deliberating something that could have been done in public, you do have the right, and you should probably announce that prior to having it, to give the public the opportunity to hear about it.
Well, you attended. You knew it was going to happen. Did you tell your constituents?
I didn't realize we would be deliberating in that session.
We weren't deliberating. We were discussing.
Oh, no, there was discussion, deliberation. When your elected body's in a quorum, it's called deliberation.
Here's my deliberation. The 66 issues, I had them, I looked at them ahead of time. I listened to your arguments in executive session, and I decided that what was in the best interest of the people of Radnor was to vote on the conditional order that was drafted by our solicitor. So that, if you want to call that deliberation, fine, call it deliberation. Thank you.
All right, well, each of us should think about how we're going to move forward with this. Don, I don't think we can go back. The decision was made, and the appeal process is over with, you know, so we can't change anything. And so what we have to do is take the information Mr. Sherry gave us, other people gave us, some information from John Rice, and decide how we're going to proceed in the future. All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting. Take a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I just want to make a point that I agree with what Commissioner Spingler just stated, and I don't think we want to try to solve this problem tonight.
No.
But I think we all agree that, you know, there is something at play here that we need to address. Whether we change what we do, or whether we don't, that's another decision, but, you know, it's clear to me, after hearing the public, and after hearing the backlash from the original process, that we could have done it better. And what that, I don't know what the answer is yet, but I would prefer, I'm just going to make my position clear, I don't want to have any deliberations in private that concern these public processes. We had six, seven hearings in public. Everything was in the record. There was nothing new that was going to come out that night that was going to change our opinion. Nothing new. We had seven nights of testimony.
I didn't need an executive session. I needed a public session.
Yeah, so the point is that we're not, you know, we have to give ourselves a little more credit here. We're not going to be swayed by some new information, or some new testimony at a hearing, I'm sorry, at a public meeting. We already had all the public disclosure. We already had all the testimony that we could have had. Seven meetings, probably 35 hours' worth of hearings, 35 hours' worth of testimony. There wasn't another word that someone had said.
But John, nothing was decided in that executive session. It was exchange of views, and then we voted publicly.
John, the issue that I have to get my arm around is, is what happened if we turned Villanova down, they appealed it, if we did everything publicly?
Well, maybe that's the tension of good government, that maybe you do turn someone down once in a while, and then maybe during the appeal, you learn that you went too far. But the point was, Villanova didn't sit across the room from us. They could have been there for the deliberation in public, and we would have had a good tension there. We would have discussed the facts, the testimony. We would have come to a good decision. The point is, I never got to argue with Villanova whether or not they would accept the condition. That was already done for us. That was done by the solicitor and Villanova. That was not done by me. That was not done by you. I don't believe you had any ex parte communication with Villanova over those points. I didn't.
And John, you know, the rules were set out to us, that all we, I couldn't discuss anything with the township manager. All I could do was discuss it with the solicitor. We set all these rules. Nobody complained about those rules. I mean, my hands were tied. You're not allowed to talk to Bob Zankowski or his staff. If you have any communication, you can only talk to the solicitor. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
But what I would submit is that had we denied certain of those, or insisted upon certain of those conditions, that Villanova would have agreed to them, and there would have been a better result for the township. I'm 100% convinced of that. Wait, we had Ms. Bailey, she wanted to say something. She usually doesn't take very long.
For the record, I have heard that the residents were against Villanova. This was never really about the residents being against Villanova. It was about the size and the scope of the plan, and about the lack of the conclusive including people in the community, and Villanova, and the township. We were really participating, but separately. I believe, based on what was the outcome, it was not a good outcome. For a variety of reasons, Villanova pretty much got whatever they asked for. I don't even know if anybody read my nine conditions. So I know it's been 30, over 33 months. I've never complained about coming here. I think the process needs to take as long as it needs to take to get it done correctly. It was not done so. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Is there public comment? Do you have any?
There's nothing to public comment on. We're not going to discuss this issue- We're not going to, we're not going to discuss this issue again. It's not, you got a new, you got something that you want to discuss?
Sure do.
But not this item here?
Not this item here. Different issue. Dan Sherry, Wayne. Just a, an issue that will dovetail regarding, you're hypothetical that you posed to me before, Mr. Spengler, that what if something was said during a meeting?
No, no, we already did that. We already did that. We already did that, Mr. Sherry. If you want to discuss something completely new-
By the way, just historically, even though I know it's not on the agenda and oversight, public participation at the beginning and at the conclusion of the meeting is to be on any topic. You remember that from these meetings you've gone to?
It's not only agenda, old business and new business on here.
That's right. You can put it on the agenda tonight, but now, we're now restricting what public participation should be.
All I want is, if you have something new to add that isn't-
I think that's problematic for you to set down that precedent, Mr. Spengler. Anyhow, I will abide by it. This is a topic regarding John Rice and something that came up at the last meeting.
We're not discussing John Rice anymore tonight.
Excuse me. You just said it was not going to be a topic that was previously discussed. John Rice-
You've discussed John Rice long enough.
Hold on a second. Exactly, is this public participation that matters now that we're not previously discussed tonight? Or is this now public participation where no discussion about John Rice whatsoever? Because that's very different.
Public participation is not on this agenda like new business, old business.
Is this, is this a public meeting, yes or no?
What's that?
Is this a public meeting?
No.
Not a public meeting?
We're going to adjourn the meeting.
This is, I know this is difficult, but we need to be consistent here. This is a public meeting, and this is the conclusion of a public meeting. The precedent in Radnor Township Board of Commissioners meeting is that the public-
We're not discussing-
And remember, you can hear with meetings-
You discuss John Rice and less. We don't want to hear anymore about John Rice.
You may not want to hear anymore about John Rice. I'm going to combine my comments regarding John Rice to a topic that wasn't previously discussed tonight.
If it's not on the agenda-
Just because John Rice has something to do with it, it doesn't mean-
May I make a point of order?
Yeah.
So my sense is that we have a precedent. It was an oversight that it, there was no public comment. We let people talk about, five minutes about whatever they want. My opinion is that it would be prudent to allow Mr. Sherry to speak. That's not our choice to make, though.
If he's going to attack, if he's going to personally attack John Rice one night-
He's going to attack John Rice and personally attack John Rice. There's been no statement by me that he's been supposed to attack John Rice.
Guys, we do have to recognize the free speech component of the Constitution. Five-minute public comment. We're going to limit your time possibly, just out of courtesy to everyone in the room. But, you know, we're going to let people say what they like to say about any topic.
So that's my sense of how we should proceed.
Well, I just hate to see people's good reputations tainted constantly.
Tainted, okay. And also an assertion that there's going to be a personal attack on John Rice. I take a bit of an exception to that. Criticizing John Rice is not a personal attack on John Rice. Now, regarding John Rice and a matter that's timely and newsworthy. Last week, I submitted an ethics complaint against John Nagel for the "somebody shoot you" comment that was picked up on a microphone, televised, subject of an apology by Mr. Nagel, in which he claimed he wasn't actually directing it to anyone, even though he directed the apology to me. And part of that ethics complaint was a request that John Rice recuse himself. As this board knows, when the Ethics Board convenes, it is required that the township manager and the township solicitor participate but shall have no vote. You now, Commissioner Spengler, will be a member of the Ethics Board regarding John Nagel's conduct. As president of the Board of Commissioners, you are pursuant to the Charter and Code to be this board's representative. In previous ethics matters, it has become extremely contentious as to whether John Rice should be involved in it or whether or not John Rice was involved in it. The previous investigation regarding Jim Higgins, who has left the DIAS but now is coming back, John Rice apparently recused himself without informing this board at large that he was doing so, thereby having Joel Barris from Reed Smith being brought in, apparently without this board's express authorization. And then, it's become clear that despite recusing himself, not telling you he recused himself, and then claiming he was under no obligation to tell you that he recused himself, John Rice is now back in at that investigation at the county level. And at the last meeting, he implied quite strongly, even though he stated he recused himself six times, and even though he said he recused himself due to an obvious potential conflict, he didn't come before this board and request to be counsel in that appeal or, for that matter, for this board to waive that obvious potential conflict that he asserted he had. So, given that John Rice witnessed Mr. Nagel's outburst, that word is John Nagel's, outburst at the meeting, I would just like it to be made very clear that if John Rice recuses himself in this matter, that he come before this board, tell them that he's recusing himself, and then you all, should you choose, authorize replacement counsel. Likewise, if he decides that even though he witnessed it, okay, at least being in the room, I shouldn't say he witnessed it. After all, Lane Paul Schaefer was 10 feet from John Nagel's mouth and claimed she didn't hear it. Maybe John Rice similarly had a problem with his hearing that night. If he is going to get back in after he recuses, that he likewise bring that to your attention. I just think that's important, that a client actually be made aware when he or she or an organization is actually being represented by somebody. That's just in the spirit of good government. I thank you, Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Curley, Commissioner Booker, for giving me the opportunity to speak, although, again, I dare say this is public participation. It's supposed to be on the agenda. It's supposed to be an opportunity for this public, Radnor Township, or anybody who decides to come to a meeting to discuss any issue they wish. And it is disheartening that at the very first meeting, the president, A, forgets the kind of word I can use to announce executive session, B, states it's an oversight that there's no public participation on the agenda, listed on the agenda, thereby disenfranchising people to come to the meeting because they won't have the opportunity to speak. And then, at the very end, to state that, oh, public participation, but only if it's for a topic we haven't previously discussed tonight. Oh, and only, only, only if it does not involve John Rice, and then a declaration that I was personally attacking Mr. Rice. I take great exception to that, sir. None of the letters that I have sent and none of the comments I have made involve a personal attack on John Rice, pointing out that John Rice is not addressing controlling law, is not accounting for controlling law, or is taking positions such as recusal without announcement, announcing of a potential conflict and recusal, and then getting back into litigation before coming to this board to waive the conflict. That's not a personal attack. That is bringing to this board's attention something that should already have been brought to this board's attention by John Rice. Thank you.
David Wood again. At Radnor High School, we teach a government class in ninth grade. And one of the things that we would like to have students do perhaps is to come into a meeting and make a public comment about something that they care about. How could I possibly do this? I have Mr. Nagel there texting. I have, I have people not doing, I have people yelling at people. How could I possibly ask a ninth-grade student to come in in front of this board and speak? It's embarrassing. I have to tell them that they can't do that sort of thing. You couldn't ask students to do that unless they're very brave. When I pull in tonight, just to get a parking spot, I find township vehicles parked out in front of the building. To me, if I were running this township, I would not allow township employees to park there. Park in the lower lot. Make it more accessible to the public. You're doing everything to get the public not to participate. And I guess that's what you want. If you want the public to participate, we need to start early and get them to participate in a way that's non-threatening. You aren't doing that currently. It's very threatening to participate publicly. And I'm going to keep coming now, and I'm going to try and beat Mr. Sherry every night on how long I can talk, if that's what we have to do to allow public participation. I'll talk for an hour up here, if that's what we need to do, and our meetings will go on forever. Because I'm not intimidated. I don't, I'm not scared to get up here and talk. It doesn't matter. But if you want to intimidate people, if you want to scare them from participating, you're doing a great job of it. Thank you.
Bob, we are building that new parking lot out there. Was that, has that been awarded? Are we under construction on that?
We, pre-bid meeting is this week. I believe it was probably Steve's truck that's probably out there. I don't know. How many vehicles were out there?
At least two.
Two vehicles? Okay. Yeah, I'll make sure that they don't park there, those two vehicles, but there's a lot more spots there, so. But I would like to take you up on the offer, though. I've been trying to look for Student Government Day. In the last two towns I was in, we actually had where the students came in and ran the government for the day. So I'd be more than happy to have that. So I'm sure you'll probably send me an email tomorrow. We'd like to do that. So I'd be more than happy to have the students actually participate with us for the day. And actually, as part of that, they actually can actually be a commissioner for the day. So what they do, and then what they would do is actually work with the commissioners for the day. They actually draw up legislation. They actually have a board meeting in the afternoon. So we'd be more than happy-
They can have my seat anytime, Bob.
So they'd be more than happy to do that. I've done that in two previous towns. The kids have enjoyed it for the day. They take each director job. So if you can, I know you can shoot me an email. Would love to do that here.
I have a ninth grader. So go ahead, Chris. I have a ninth grader, and I don't know that she would want to come, but not because she's afraid, because she's not that interested.
I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity for them to see what we go through.
My comment, Christina Peroni, again, is unfortunately regarding what Mr. Higgins said about attorney-client privilege. You cannot hide behind attorney-client privilege when you're having an executive session. An executive session is mandated by the charter. There are four reasons you're allowed to have it, and only those four reasons. So if you want to have client privilege, then you say to Mr. Rice, "Mr. Rice, give us advice. Villanova says they don't want to put in the right turn lane. Is that something we can require?" And Mr. Rice is your work counsel and can tell you based on the zoning codes. That is his job. But Mr. Rice works for the voters. So the private matters between the township, it's only if you're under litigation. So I would just ask you all to reread the charter. There's four reasons you can, you can get together, and only those four reasons.
Patty Barker, Garrett Hill. I just want to read what a number of people have gotten up here to say, and I have said to you in the past. You, as our elected officials, are to exhibit models of behavior that are above and beyond the rest of us. I don't care how annoying we are, how obnoxious we are, or how many times we get up and say the same things over and over. We're here because we care about what you're doing. We're here because we elected you to be our representatives. It's your job to listen to us, to hear us out with respect and courtesy. And as someone else just said here, I have been embarrassed in the last few months by some of the behavior exhibited by you board members. And I'm asking that as your New Year's resolution, and I think tonight you've set a pretty good precedence, except just recently, I feel like to argue with people who are standing up here, just let them, just let us say what we have to say, which is what you've done for the most part this evening, because we'll be finished much faster if you try to shut us up than if you try to shut us up. So please afford us the courtesy that, for the most part, I think we afford you, because we elected you because we felt you were going to represent us. So thank you for your service, and please accord us some civility and respect, as you do most of the time. But thank you.
That's the end of public comment.